Good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Finance Agenda or Meeting for Wadsworth City Council, Tuesday, August 20th at 6:00 PM. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Urichak?
Here.
Okay. You've all had a chance to review the minutes. May have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we have draft legislation to look at. The first item, there was a lot of discussion in public service last night, so we're not going to bring that up. We'll start right out with ordinance number, the second item, which is ordinance pertaining to the $75,000 for the electric fund. Mr. Iscock, please.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Members of council, good evening. This was an item that was discussed last evening at public service. I know Mr. Testa addressed it. It essentially deals with some electronic processing fees that we're working through and anticipating some increases to. So we're asking for your consideration in that regard.
I have some questions on that. Further questions? This is disputed bill coming up because of the amount is so much more. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And last night, my field, my first thought was if we're going to pay over above and it's their fault, we should receive interest back for it. And then I hadn't time to sleep on it overnight, and I was like, well, if I had a disputed bill personally, I would make arrangements, make a plan with them, not pay it, you know, whatever, put it in escrow or whatever. What is our plan to deal with this?
Yeah, yeah. So let me clarify. It was not an issue of us paying it. It was an issue of them holding our money and saying they're not going to give it to us unless they give it to us by taking out the fees. So that's when we really, for the first time, kind of saw this giant bill of all of these fees, and that's why we're going through an audit and looking at that to see, are we being charged something that we weren't expecting? Are the fees higher than we were led to believe? Have they misapplied the fees, meaning maybe they've charged them twice on certain transactions? So that's the process that we're going through. But part of it really was, I mean, they were withholding our money that, you know, was due us. And I don't know, Kathy, if you want to add anything to that.
I really haven't been involved, the treasurer's been involved in recording the fees net of those receipts, so I can't speak to the details.
And I would say, you know, additionally, I know the treasurer has raised on a couple of occasions the idea that they're, you know, they're allowed a small amount of time as the float, but then basically they have to remit the monies to us, and that on several occasions, they've been late in doing that.
And what is our recourse then?
I don't know what our recourse is at this time. We need to figure out, number one, what's going on, and number two, can we find an alternative if it turns out that these fees are legitimate and are much higher? And I say if we can find an alternative, because we were really forced to go with this, this process or this time around, because they're also the same company that owns our accounting and utility billing software system. So they bought the company that is our accounting and utility billing software system, and they recently developed their own payment system and basically said, hey, we're not going to let others connect with us anymore, so you can't use what you've been using, which was authorize.net. You've got to use our payment solution if you wanted to continue to work with your accounting and billing system.
How long is the audit that you speak of going to take, you think?
Well, I'm hoping we're going to be done with it in a month. You know, there's a lot of transactions, because what you're talking about is everybody that pays their utility bill, either with a credit card, a debit card, or an e-check. And really, you're talking about over the last few months. So there were some problems that we had with whether or not they were basically connecting with us. Our records seem to show that they basically weren't asking for fees and knocking on our door, so to speak. There was some concern on their part that, yeah, we're doing that, but nobody's answering. And the problem that we faced is our relationship is with Tyler Payments. That's the vendor behind the payment solution and our accounting system. They have the relationship with the bank, so we've had virtually no communication between us and the bank, because everything has to go through Tyler.
Further questions? Falls under public service or somewhere?
So we had talked last night about because of the committee suspending and calling this this evening?
Yeah, so the reason that we've asked for this additional money is we know that at the beginning of September, they're going to take out fees for the month of August. And, you know, we're, our plan is to basically wrap up everything that we need to do within a month, and then if we need to negotiate with them or do something else, it's probably going to take a little bit of time. So we wanted to make sure that we have enough to pay the upcoming charges, which are going to be in a couple of weeks, and then if necessary, the charges for the following month. I don't believe that this would be enough to cover us for the rest of the year. We typically spend about $10,000 to $15,000 a month on these processing charges. Under the relationship that we have with them, we've noticed they've been really between $25,000 and $30,000 a month. But again, you know, we just started with them in February, and it wasn't, you know, until a few months later, when we finally connected with them, that they took this giant chunk out. So...
Do we not have a contract that spells out what the fees will be, and, I mean, percentage-wise and stuff like that?
Well, we do have a contract. We have a contract with Tyler Payments that says, here's what our merchant fee is going to be, plus the percentage that we're going to take out. And it's a small, you know, like 0.4 of 1%. We have a separate agreement that's signed where we basically set up our account with the bank, but we didn't have any transparency beyond that. So when we get hit with all of these fees, you know, we're looking at it saying, okay, I can do the math here on the number of transactions in the dollar amount, and this is what we're saying we should, we should be paying. And, you know, since we've had that discussion, they have sent us probably about 100 pages of rates that are kind of the behind-the-scenes processing for Visa and MasterCard. So that is all the stuff that we're going through, is trying to kind of trace these fees and see, you know, are they legitimate? Are they excessive? Are they correct? But, you know, they've applied them three times to a transaction when they shouldn't, so they owe us a credit. But there's a lot of detail work that goes into it, just because we're talking about a few months, we're talking about a lot of transactions, and there's a lot of moving pieces, parts, depending on the card or the bank that a resident uses to pay their bills, and then ultimately going through the bank that Tyler's using, and then Tyler Payments themselves. So there's a lot of detail work, but we're going to, we're going to figure it out.
I have a question. What's the difference between what we were expecting and what they're charging?
Yeah, so when we first entered into this, our expectation is that we really weren't going to see any increase in our monthly billing. You know, the rates that were specified on the agreement with Tyler, and this is really just a small, couple-page agreement where we, we got the initial equipment and said, okay, here's your processing fees. They appear reasonable. It's like, like I said, the 40 cents a transaction, and then, you know, 0.4 of 1%. And if you were to multiply their fees out, plus the fees that the bank is supposed to be charging, and multiply that against the transactions that we've sampled and the dollar amounts, it appears that it's reasonable. It should be about 2% of charges. Unfortunately, you know, when we get this, all these fees that accumulated, I think they owe us maybe about $400,000 and they say, hey, we're withholding $100,000, because that's the fees that you, that you owe us. So that's what we're trying to figure out, is all the transactions that had occurred starting in February through this time period, where are they coming up with these numbers? And in my mind, it appears excessive. I have asked a couple of times on some of the sample auditing that I've already done, I've asked Tyler Payments, you know, am I interpreting this correctly? Because, you know, the fees are, should only be about 2%. Can you confirm that that's accurate? And thus far, they haven't been responsive to that, but, you know, we, to be fair, we've still got a lot of work to do on our part. That's just in some samples that myself and our billing manager have been going through, where they've, you know, provided some specific details about a specific, you know, section of transactions.
If we don't pay these fees, they will withhold our next installment? Is that what you indicated?
Well, so it's not a matter of us paying the fees. They're collecting the money and remitting to us our, our money after the fees have been deducted. Our assertion is that, well, wait a minute, you know, you're saying our fees are a lot higher than we're expecting, and you're withholding them or telling us, you know, you're not going to give us our money unless we, we basically agree to those fees. So that's what we're trying to figure out. So we don't get the money first and then have an option of whether or not we should pay the fees. It's, we get the money after the fees have been deducted.
We'll suspend and call this this evening.
So then I'm confused. So what's the $75,000 for? If they can, if they can withhold the fees, why?
Well, it's for what we, the authorization of what we can spend. So we have, in our budget, money set aside to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars for various pieces, parts, the largest of which is basically the processing fees. We're going to go over that authorized spend amount, so we need a supplemental or additional budget appropriation to be able to cover fees that are in excess of what we had budgeted.
And then you're going to try to get back, figure out if they owe us money and get it back?
That, that's right.
So should we change it to where it's up to $75,000? This question for council, how would you feel?
I'm okay with it.
What was the question?
I'm okay with that.
Should we change it to up to 75?
Oh.
Yeah, that's fine with me. That's...
So we would have to amend that? Is that okay with the administration?
Well, when we post it, just to clarify, we'll post the amount that you approve. So you approve a number of 75,000 as it's written. Is that, is that what you're questioning?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's less, it's less.
Yes. They just won't use it.
Yeah.
They don't have to spend it all.
Right. I just want to make sure.
It's broken.
Okay.
That'll be ordinance number 24-093.
093. Okay, thank you.
The next one has to do with lighting at 261 and 76. We discussed that in public ways. Do you want to make comment, Mr. Iscock?
Only that it was discussed in public ways. This is something that ODOT has, has called twice to our offices to see the status of where it is. I've reported that status and told them that it is on for consideration this evening.
We talked about suspending the call in it.
Yeah. Mr. Rosberg?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-094.
Then again, the next one, Capital Works Project for Resurfacing.
This is an annual item that we have. It comes due usually as an application period around Labor Day, so this will be for our participation in the 2025 funding. So we're just getting ready to put our application.
Into what we're going to resurface?
Well, it's not necessarily designed only for resurfacing, but it's a, it's a pool of money that we can use for any type of resurfacing project.
Mr. Rosberg, that would be out of ways.
Suspended call.
Okay.
That'll be ordinance 24-095.
All right. Then the next one is to change some ordinances, I believe, it's Mr. Urichak, but would you like to respond on that?
Sure. It was, again, something that was discussed in EDNP. This was for members of EDNP or anyone who watched that particular meeting. This was as part of Mr. Davis's presentation in terms of the first ordinance, along with the ordinance immediately following on your agenda, deals with, the first ordinance is sort of language cleanup ordinance. The next ordinance actually establishes new fees, those types of things. I think the consideration was to put this on for several readings if, if council was considering it.
Mr. Urichak?
I have a question. Will we get ordinance like this, which change ordinances? Would it be possible for us to have the highlights of the changes, the changes, highlights? I mean, I read this, I don't know what's been taken out and what's been changed.
It was discussed in committee.
Pardon me?
It was discussed in committee.
Yeah, but not the details of, you know, I mean, we...
The details were?
I was at that meeting. I mean, we didn't go through, I can't, I can't tell, I can't tell by reading this if every little thing that we talked about is in there or not, and I don't think that's a lot to ask.
Well, we'll have it for another reading, so...
Yeah.
That'll be, the first one is 24-096, and then 24-097.
You'll take both of those, Mr. Urichak?
Yep. I'll put them on second.
Okay. Then the final one is the ordinance, supplemental ordinance for $8,500.
This was also discussed last evening at public service, and this is an amount that was, is being requested so that we continue, can continue to use the Medina Accounting Building Department services during the interim period in which we find a new building, building and planning official for those duties and responsibilities. Essentially allows us to continue on the relationship we already have, where they are covering some of our electrical and plan review responsibilities at this point in time.
This amount will cover us for approximately how long? I mean, it's a guest of it, I know, but...
Yeah, I would say it's about two months, approximately. That's a little bit dependent upon how much, how much work comes in during that period.
And if we hire somebody, in the meantime, we would not have to do any more.
That is correct.
Okay. If there's no questions, all suspended call this this evening.
And that'll be ordinance 24-098.
That takes us to the agenda of city council tonight. We have one item, and that's the repair in zone setback ordinance. We've had quite a few discussions on.
I'll just move that to third.
Okay. Okay, any other business?
I do. I've been thinking that we've been using the suspended call quite a bit, so I, in fact, looked June, July, and so far in August, and we had 30 ordinances, and 21 of them were suspended call. That's 70%. Tonight, it's four out of six. So we're over 70% of our ordinances are suspended call. And that does not give me or others a chance to digest it. In fact, I made a mistake when I, with the one we had last night about the 75,000, my first, like I said, my first initiation, initial idea was, we better get interest in it. Nobody gives me a free loan. And then, after thinking, sleeping on it, having some time, I said, hold it. If I had that personal dispute, I would not pay it, or we'd work out a plan. I put it escrow, I do something. So I wouldn't, especially with that amount of money for individual, that's a lot for the city, it's not. So I'm a little worried that we're not giving ourselves enough time for the three reading rule, at least one extra time. I understand that we need to move in government and do things, and we're moving the parks and so forth rather quickly, and things are, but I think we need to consider that, okay? That we're maybe using that a little bit too much. We are having enough time to find the intended and unintended consequences of these ordinances.
I agree with you, Mr. Parrish.
Any other comments? Any other business? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We are adjourned. Will the regular meeting of Wadsworth City Council for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, please come to order? Will you please rise, pledge allegiance to the flag, and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you for all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. Through Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Urichak?
Here.
You've had the opportunity to review the minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 6, 2024. May have a motion to approve them.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Are there any visitors that would like to speak tonight? If so, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have about three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence.
There's no correspondence.
Okay. Then we'll move to committees and commissions. First one, Public Service Committee, Mr. Stugmeyer.
Public Service will next meet on Monday, September the 16th, 5:30 PM here in council chambers.
Public Safety Committee, Mr. Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting of public safety will be on September 11th at 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers.
Public Ways Committee, Mr. Rosberg.
Our next public ways meeting will be Monday, September 9th, here in Chamber Council, council chambers at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Economic Development Planning Committee, Mr. Urichak.
Yes, EDNP will next meet on Monday, September 9th at 5:00 PM in council chambers.
Committee of the Whole met this evening at 6:00 PM. Airport Commission, Mr. Stugmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Airport Commission will next meet on Monday, September the 30th at 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
Stormwater Commission, Mr. Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of stormwater will be on October 21st, just before the Public Service Committee meeting at 5:00.
Very good. Planning Commission will next meet Monday, August 26th, date to be determined. Shade Tree Commission, Jeanne, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be meeting next Tuesday, August 27th, right here in council chambers at 5:00.
Cemetery Board, Mr. Urichak.
Yes, Cemetery Board will next meet tomorrow evening at 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
And Cable TV Commission, Ms. Hanlon.
Cable TV Commission will meet on Thursday, October 3rd at 4:00 in council chambers.
And Senior Citizens Commission, Mr. Parrish.
Senior Citizens Commission will meet Monday, October 7th at 3:30 PM at the Supreme Center.
All right. That brings us to the reading of legislation. Will a clerk please read the legislation for this evening?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. We're going to start with first readings this evening. Ordinance number 24-093 on first reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer, Discuss the Committee of the Whole, and ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $75,000 in the 608 Electric Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President, I make a move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-093.
Second.
Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
No.
Hines?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
No.
Hanlon?
Yes.
I feel so... We'll have to move at the second.
Okay. I'll make a motion then to move ordinance number 24-093 to second reading.
All in favor?
No, you got it. Somebody's got it.
I do have a call.
Don't we have to second it?
Do you second it?
Oh.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-093 has been moved to second reading.
Ordinance number 24-094 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg and Discuss the Public Ways, and ordinance giving consent to the Ohio Director of Transportation to perform pavement repairs in the city of Wadsworth and Medina County. This project includes the partial interchange lighting and Med, Medina Interstate 76 and State Route 261 are within the city limits and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-094.
Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 24-094.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Rosberg's proposal, call the question. Will a clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-094?
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-094 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-095 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg and Discuss the Public Ways, and ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement program, round 39, and to execute agreements for grants and loans for the 2025 OPWC resurfacing project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-095.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 24-095.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Rosberg's proposal, call the question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-095?
Hines?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-095 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-096 on first reading sponsored by council member John Urichak and Discuss the Committee of the Whole, and ordinance to amend sections 53.16, 97.15, 150.009, 150.078, 150.081, 150.082, 153.054, 153.095, 154.540, 155.05, 155.09, 155.010, and to delete obsolete language in sections 97.03 and 97.32 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we place ordinance number 24-096 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-096 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-097 on first reading sponsored by council member John Urichak and Discuss the Committee of the Whole, and ordinance to establish fees for sections